To order, thank you all. Thank you all very much for coming. We are here to discuss an article going on the warrant for the Charlestown voters last year. It was on the warrant for some changes to our Articles of Agreement. They passed and now it will come before you to, well, I suppose after this hearing, we will decide if it's safe or not. It will come before you to make a choice and it's a big choice and we appreciate your attention to this. And so I'm going to read the potential article and then I'm going to open up. Person's week. Actually, sorry, I'm gonna take that back just a little bit because we have so many people online. I'm going to introduce the people at the table. So first, I have Dr. Christopher Spence, our superintendent this year. I have Shelley Andrews from Charlestown. Kevin Keith from Langdon, I'm Melissa Vaskum, also from Charlestown. Sarah from Acworth. Jamie from Walpole.
And at large.
And at large, thank you. Also here with us, we have Chris Young, the principal from the Charlestown Primary School as well as the North Charlestown Community School. And after I read this warrant article, we'll be hearing from him. So the question that will be before us to discuss tonight is Article Nine. Shall the voters of the Charlestown School District vote to permanently close and relinquish ownership of the North Charlestown Community School?
Sorry.
Hi, Joe, welcome. And this is Joe, he's our Acworth, excuse me, board member. All right, Chris, I give you the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. This past year, as you know, I took over as principal of North Charlestown and Charlestown Primary School. That was not always past practice. It used to be the principal at CMS. Also I have the responsibility of North Charlestown. However, with the reconfiguration that happened, I was able to take that role on this year. So I'm submitting before you, I did create a little handout of just some facts. This is, for me, I'm looking at as an educational opportunity right now. And last year, we had went in front of the voters to have a discussion of reconfiguring the Charlestown Schools. That did pass. Some of the things that that brought was some of our talking points with increased teachers efficacy with A level teams. That is happening now that they're all together. The Charlestown Middle School schedule allows for teachers to have content specific in teaching their passion. That is happening. The Charlestown Middle School schedule allows for dedicated reading and language arts talks for writing. Similar to other middle schools within the Fall Mountain School System. Increased continuity and specialist teachers with less travel. That is happening. And then also an increase in student grouping. Now that they're all together, you have the ability to group them differently. And really be able to meet not only the students that are struggling, the students on grade level, but also being able to reach those higher level students in their critical thinking. So all those are happening, which is a very positive thing for Charlestown. So this year, as you know, the pre-K is up at North Charlestown Community School. We started that this year in the Farwell side of the building. We had a couple of discussions on where would be best located. We talked about bathrooms, we talked about accessibility, what makes a little change for our pre-K students. And after about a week, we quickly moved them down into the newer section, most of the playground. And there were a number of factors that 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 brought, but it ultimately had a positive impact. There are still challenges up at North Charlestown with the pre-K up there. Some of the things that I like to talk about is if they do come back to the Charlestown Primary School, what would some of the educational opportunities be when we bring back? So in my eyes, the biggest struggle that they are facing right now is just being part of a community. It is hard to be a community when you only have one classroom with between 12 and 15 young students. Being in a bigger school, pre-K to four would be able to provide them that opportunity to engage with peer role models, to be able to interact with others within the building. They will have buddy reading. There are a lot of opportunities that are opened up when we're not isolated up in one building. Another thing, the ability to participate in specials, art, P E, music, that is not happening just because we don't have enough availability to get specials out there. With the schedules that we are housing that. Additional support for students that are struggling with self-regulation. Being isolated up in North, that is a struggle. Being at the primary school, we have those resources available within the building. So if something needs to happen, we can address it in a much more timely manner. Increased flexibility with staff in one absence. As with any building, absences are a struggle around Fall Mountain right now, but especially within a building of one. If a person's out, it really has a negative impact on students and you have some in. Being in a larger building, we have some more flexibility of people knowing the students and being able to jump in and help them. Increased time with program. This would actually be the time of pre-K because they're up at North. They actually travel up to North and after the buses get to CPS. You'd actually be able to extend it about 10 minutes, which would allow for some specials and some other things to happen within that time. So instead of being two hours and 20 minutes, we go back to two hours and 30 minutes of pre-K. And last, one of my biggest, we had a decrease in the time that students are on the bus. We didn't have a positive impact at all. The other things that I wanted to talk about is just safety. Being the only class out in North Charlestown, it's pretty isolating. Can create potential safety concerns. Just being isolated with a group of students. There are three currently three staff members working up there. Going back into the primary school, we have the support of about 50 staff members. So I won't go into all the other safety pieces. The one thing I will point out is the last bullet point of the nurse. Being able to go back to the primary school, we would have the so that both scrapes things along that line to be addressed without can be assessed a little bit differently than just calling their parents and saying, hey, look, this is what happened. Please come pick them up. So it does provide a number of different avenues to benefit students having a pre-K group for the primary school. Some of the things that I also looked at just moving forward is really looking at numbers and being able to predict how 10, 15 years. As you know, the Charlestown Primary School kept putting additions on. There was an addition put on in 2011 or 2001. The two rooms on the front, which are used to be the pre-K in kindergarten. Now they are a, the steps program in the kindergarten classroom. Those were put on in 2001 and then the large addition with a gym was put on in 2008, seven or eight and six. I want to say under Ben, the four
2004, seven, eight. 2005.
We'll split the difference and say 2005, okay? Which allowed us quite a few rooms. Currently, we have 210 kids. How is that Charlestown Primary School? Bring back pre-K, that bringing up there about 240. There are about 30 kids in pre-K, pre-T. We've been up since I've been a principal there, this is my 11th year. We've been up in the 265, 270 range when you look at number of students in that building. So we can still take on more students if needed. It does come down to what would it look like there, what I call bubble classes. So classes that may be bigger than a typical class. The typical class right now is about 42 42 per grade level. Our incoming kindergarten class is 53. So that is considered a bubble class in my opinion. We're going to have to look at things a little differently because our model may not completely work as they move up in grades. The 53 students are broken up into three different grade level teachers. There are about 17 in each classroom. So that would need to continue as you go up. So the model may have to change, but we would have space in that building. What would happen to the NCCS building? I think is a question that I've been asked a number of different times. We have Matt here to be able to address that too. I know that may be a question that is brought up and maybe can answer it now or we can kind of hold off on that.
So the Charlestown Primary, excuse me, the Charlestown, North Charlestown Elementary School was gifted to the school district by the Farwell Trust. And it was given by deed that indicates that if it's no longer used for educational purposes, it would revert back to the trust. So if the school district revoked permanently closed the school, ownership would revert back to the trust. Now, whether what the trust would want to do with it, I'm not sure. If they declined to take possession of it, then by statute, it would go into the town. But the first instance, it would go back to the trust.
The last, the last, maybe just the map of Charlestown Primary School, I think a lot of you have been in it. But it kind of lays out kind of new configuration after you would be given to Charlestown last year. This gives you, just for your knowledge, how many rooms there are. There are some intervention rooms that can turn into classrooms if needed. We do have a library, we do have a music room, we have an art room. All these can be classrooms if needed.
But then what happens to those? Do they not have music and art anymore?
No, they still have music and art. I'm not saying to eliminate the room at all. I'm just saying that those are possible solutions for down the road if ever needed. So we have additional classrooms that we could use to create a model that would be three class, three classroom teachers all the way up from kindergarten all the way up to fourth grade.
Chris, that wouldn't, you're not talking about eliminating the art room or the music from next year. Nope, yeah.
So right now, we're looking at this map. What I would do is take the room up front, which is the K two steps room. Pre-K can be back in that room. And I would move that steps program. It's a district-wide program, but I would probably move it to room two or room three, which is the intervention rooms. And intervention is a push-in model right now. So you have some pull-out, but the majority of it is push-in so that that room's not even as and if things grow, we'd have to look at things differently, but I don't, I value the arts 100%. I don't want to eliminate any rules. But there's flexibility within the footprint of Charlestown Primary School to handle additional students. That's what I'm trying to imagine.
Yeah, just, just to go back to the building now. Because I know that we discussed it, so I think it's important maybe to just bring it up for the folks who are here and whoever may be online. There was a question of whether or not the trust was still viable, if there were still, you know, if there were people still at the trust itself, the Farwell Trust. Can you share what we, what we learned?
Well, I believe the trust is still still in existence. I still believe that the, a number of the primary grantors and signatures are still alive.
Many of them are in the room.
Well, welcome.
Oh, that's good.
The, the issue would be what, there needs to be a conversation with the members of the trust that's looking on. But the, the language of the deed actually says when it's stopped being used for educational purposes. So as long as it's still being used for educational purposes, the district, it wouldn't trigger that provision of the deed.
So the town could choose to use it for something else that meets that criteria.
It would have the educational purposes and the term is not defined within the document. So I need to know if there's some conversation, I think, with trustees about how they felt about whatever uses proposed of it.
I will ask that going forward, because we have so many people online, if you have a question or a statement to make, if you could announce yourself, please.
The and I guess one of the conversations we did have is what happens if the town were not to vote to close it? And what would happen at that point? Would the board continue to operate it with as a preschool? It might not, the board may very well decide that on a trial basis, it wants to try moving the preschool down to the primary school. I think as long as it was on a temporary basis, that probably wouldn't trigger the clause, but I would want to probably have a conversation with trustees. Certainly want to go with the disagree with trustees. But you should be aware, there is this provision. The statute talks about when a school is closed, statute dealing with corporate school districts. And the default there is we go to the town, but that presupposes that the cooperative school district owns the property without a restriction. In this case, there is a deed restriction. They said that it's stopped being used for educational purposes.
Did you have anything where you wanted to?
Unless there are questions specifically for me, I'm one happy to answer or?
I'm happy to answer.
It's just, sorry. So for, you know, for note taking, we need to know, we need your name for the, for the, you know, whoever's doing the notes from the video.
Didn't know who was gonna go, so I don't want to.
So if you raise your hand, the chair will recognize you.
He's just over here.
Jennifer Haynes from North Charlestown. I actually just have a question for you, Mr. Young, because I, I believe this is your report. Okay. It says last year, the Charlestown Community voted to restructure the three Charlestown Schools to better meet the needs of all students. Can you remind me of that vote? When did the, when did we vote to do that?
So in, in my eyes, we voted on that when we went with the proposed budget. Proposed budget was with the proposed budget came the restructuring of the Charlestown Schools.
So that was in with the rest of, the restructuring was inside the budget. We voted on it as a whole and not as an individual
Yeah.
circumstance.
Okay, that seems like a pretty big piece of the pie there to kind of go in with a budget. Maybe not. I have one other, sorry. Mrs. Xavier?
Haley, same here. I just have a question on this. On the grades, it looks like there's two third and two fourth.
Correct.
So right now, there's three second and three first. What happens with the three first and second?
So, so depending on the model that we went with when we looked at the reconfiguration is as they get up in grades, my priority was to provide a smaller class size in K through two. And by the time they hit third grade, we need to look at class size and be able to say, okay, is it feasible having two classrooms and a little bit larger class? Or is it needed to remain with three? And that's going to be a conversation every year moving forward. There's going to be a time that we are going to have to have three in either all the grades or multiple grades. Because there are classes of 53 in kindergarten. That, that, to bring that into two classes would be too large a number for, for two teachers. So there's going to have to be additions made, but every year is going to look a little different. My priority is to look at K two and keeping the smaller class sizes. So they can really learn their fundamental skills of math and language by the time they hit third grade. If numbers allow, we'll go into two. If they don't, then we're going to be adding an additional teacher.
An additional teacher, but where do they go on here?
So there, there, you could look at the intervention rooms. You could look at some of, there are some offices made that may used to be a classroom. There are a lot of things that we can do within the footprint to accommodate more students. So and, and there are options when it comes to looking at schedules for art and music and being able to have it in one room instead of two rooms. So there's some flexibility when it comes to this. Is it? I can't predict 20 years out and what mandates are going to be needed. Okay, what was it? 11, 13 years ago, we added pre-K into our elementary schools. Before that, we went, about 20 years ago, we went with full-time kindergarten. If you were thinking 35 years ago, we weren't thinking full-time kindergarten. We weren't thinking pre-K. Things change over time and we're going to have to adapt to it. But the physical footprint of the school provides some flexibility in that. And it is large enough to house more students.
Miss X.
I'm Murphy Hicks, I'm the pre-K teacher. I want to reiterate everything that Chris said to talk about pre-K being that in living in my community of the CPS school. I think it would be really beneficial for those kids, just being there, teaching them and seeing what they need is more of a community for sure. And just also, I just want to add the playground is more appropriate, age-appropriate at this, at CPS and in North Charlestown. I mean, we're hard time with the playground right now. But that's all I really wanted to say. I'm gonna get out of here before she disrupts this whole meeting.
Well, thank you very much for being here.
And she's been very good.
Yeah, she's leaning by, she's scurrying, I'm like.
Are there any other questions or comments from the public?
I think I have one more. I think I'm just very nervous because I don't know how we're going to fit all of them if we do get more grades of 54, 54, 54. I didn't see pre-K working out north this year, so that is not shocking for me. I think knowing that it's not working, just reassure that this may not work and that is where my concern is. So I think that's all I have to say about this. How do we know? It's all trial and error and no one's going to know until we find it, but to give up something. Not known.
I, I think what you're saying is if we do three classes, if we have classes of 50 again, which we used to, we have to have three classes, three grade level teachers in each grade level. Okay? And yes, certain rooms would have to be given up to make that work. But right now, we house guidance within the classroom. We house PE with their, the specialists. And the arts are incredibly important, but there's some flexibility if needed. And we hit that point that we can utilize rooms in different manners than what we're using right now. So it provides some flexibility. We do have two intervention rooms right now that could be classrooms. So in my eyes, if we hit that point, we could look at the district program and be in a different school at that point. We have two open classrooms and we would not be affecting any of the arts. That would be my ideal position, but again, that's a district level decision, so I can't make that. But there is flexibility when you look at the map and that's why I put it on there for everybody's knowledge. I want accurate information out there. I want you to know what it looks like within the building. And we did a lot of, we didn't do any restructuring, but we did at some point in my eyes, there's going to, within the same footprint, it would be beneficial to look at things from a safety point of view and having two classrooms on the front 20 years from now may not be the best, the best situation. We may need to look at changing the footprint within, within the building without expanding, just looking at it a little bit.
Miss X.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna add a comment on their conversation.
Go ahead.
Just from historical. So as Chris mentioned, historically, in his time, the numbers have been up as high as 270. I believe if you go further back, I think they were higher than that. As he mentioned, some of the rooms on here and what happens, and it happens everywhere, as, as populations go down, rooms are used for different purposes, obviously, right? So people expand into them. And so when you, when you look at the map, which is a great idea, Chris, thank you. You have special ed, two rooms, you have interventionist, you have Title One, you have the steps program, which I believe didn't used to be in your school. It used to be in the Walpole, one of the Walpole schools, right? And the Walpole, Walpole is shrinking and so is Alstead. So if, if a conversation had to be had about potentially moving that within the district, there, there are other locations that do have to move. So I think that and you can't predict the future, absolutely not, you know? But I think it's been a thoughtful process for them at the primary school to try to make sure that it doesn't decimate any of the programs that are already in place or the quality of the programs that are in place. I, I think the administrations tried to be very thoughtful about that. Because at the end of the day, they want what's best for the kids to educationally.
So last week, Kevin and I had the opportunity to go and take a tour during the school day, get a sense for what the school was like with the students and the teachers and all the staff in each building, both at CPS and here at the middle school. And the first feeling I had when I walked in the building was that, where is everyone? I mean, you never felt like you were in a crowded space. We looked into every single classroom. Every classroom felt spacious and comfortable. There was not clusters of students in outside rooms being taught anything because they were being pulled out. And, and the question I asked was, when we grow? Because I do expect Charlestown to grow some in the next decade. What can we accommodate? Because the last thing I want to do is take this capacity that we have in North Charlestown and shut it down and then ask the taxpayers for millions of dollars to build the school. I don't think that's fair and I certainly wouldn't vote for anything that was going to do that. And so we asked the question and the question was, we could easily take on an additional 50 Charlestown students without even blinking. And so that gave me a lot of comfort in looking at these plans and what can go in the future. I don't know if you had the same sense.
I did, I agree, but it seemed spacious, well laid out, there wasn't a lot of noise. It was, you know, it wasn't what I was expecting for elementary school. So I was very pleasantly surprised.
Again, I think that was part of my question and concern was that the restructuring happened every year when you'll say we loaded for it in our budget, which still doesn't really sit right with me. 10 months later, you know, we've done an empty school with a pre-K with a bunch of us scratching our head the entire time saying, why are we putting one pre-K class in an empty building? It's a security issue. They're isolated. We were saying all these things. Why are we putting the youngest, most vulnerable of our population all by themselves down there? So that's, that's an issue I have, that that decision was made by who? The school board or the administration? I just, I know it wasn't the community that made that decision. When we have kids who, you know, you could have moved third, fourth and fifth there and moved up, kept all the little kids up here. Not to mention the middle school. We moved a whole bunch of kids to this school last year. I don't have any children in Mr. Young's school anymore, so I, I hear he's doing great. I just know that when I came here for the open house, there was trash everywhere. You had teachers here who had, didn't even know where their class was going to be two days before school started. They didn't have time to put their class together. They had two days and they didn't even know what they'd be teaching. So to me, that's an issue when you say, oh, So to me, that's an issue when you say, oh, we have room, but are you giving these people time to prepare for this? Your teachers didn't have time to move their their stuff in the rooms that they needed. In this school, I don't, I'm not, I don't know about Mr. Young's school. I toured here. And it didn't leave me with any feel-good thoughts. Um, I know it's possible, your principal up here, this school, when we asked the question at the last meeting, are you gonna be ready? We asked her. Um, and she said, yeah, even if we're not ready, we can put classes, we can put kids in the hallways, we can teach them in the hallways. And that's great that she's all gung ho about that, but we had a perfectly good school with set-up classrooms and teachers and staff for those kids last year. But we chose to rush into this and we weren't ready. That's, that's what I see from my standpoint at in the school, from my own kids and from other parents and other teachers. So I I am really, I'm concerned that you want to vote or you want to give the option to close a school when we barely one year out from restructuring and there's still so many bugs in this, but you want to pull that fall back out under us now. It's happening really fast. Like, why not wait? We're gonna move the pre-k back to CM CPS and that's gonna work great, hopefully. What if it doesn't? What if it's too crowded? What if North Charlestown has their they're trying to get more housing and we've got another fifty families, then what? Why are we gonna pull that trap, that school that's in perfectly good condition? This year, why was that brought up? I, that's what I would like to know is where did this come from? Let's close North, let's vote to do it. Let's give the Charlestown people room for that. So where did that come from?
Mr. Young approached the school, he said it right in his notes on the first page.
Okay.
I had brought forward the recommendation of closing North Charlestown Community School at the December fourth board workshop and housing all pre-k grade four students at Charlestown Primary.
But he did that.
And could you announce your name, please?
Oh, Shannon Wood, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But this was, this was his idea this year, which makes sense because it's silly to have a school with one grade. But who's the original idea? Was there, like, where did this come from a year and a half ago, a year ago?
Go ahead, Chris.
I just wanted to address one thing in pre-k. So the reason we looked at pre-k is a one particular reason, uh, pre-k provides us the most flexibility when it comes to instructional hours. So what we were able to do is we were able to, what I call point of contact busing. So if they were pre-cared, they could still come to school and bus. It would be then, once they're at the Charlestown Primary School, school up in North Charlestown would start ten, fifteen minutes later. So they came to Charlestown Primary School, they were bused up to North Charlestown. And that provided us the flexibility to be able to have a classroom up there. That's why we chose uh, pre-k. When it comes to the others, uh, it really came down to looking at class size. And the structure of things, when it comes to being able to group students, the more you have together, the easier it is to structure. When you're talking about third and fourth, uh, maybe third and fourth up there or fourth and fifth up there. There was a lot of things being brought up in a number of different times. I've been here ten years and I have sat at site base and had this conversation since my day one, all the way until today. And there were been a lot of different things for folks. One of the biggest challenges of having the littles up there, uh, pre-k. With it, with them being the only ones in the building and have a bathroom that they can access. If you have kindergarten up there, the state law says that they have to have a bathroom in the classroom, which is not feasible without some construction up in, up at North Charlestown. Moving the larger of maybe fourth and fifth grade up there, bringing some other complications as in the, at the primary school, we have a gym. North Charlestown does not have that um option. So being able to provide the most flexibility for the students that we have and the number of students we currently have. It made the most sense to deal with housing at the Charlestown Primary School.
So to your question. When did it come to a head? It was a decision that we, I can't quote dates, you can go back and look at them. Um, it probably came to a head with the budget committee. Last year, having meetings with the administration regarding setting a budget number. There was a lot of discussing during those meetings about cutting the budget. And so during the discussions about cutting the budget and taking positions out of the budget is what really drove that more prior quicker than it would have maybe happened. Um, so if if you want to, I think they were taped, I'm not sure, I can't remember when we started doing that. Um, but if you wanted to go back and and, you know, review some of that, that's when the whole discussion. It has been going on for years and years before Chris got here. But really, when it came to a head and the conversations got very serious about what does this look like? Was when the budget committee was reviewing the budget that was given to them. I'll say me, because I sat on the budget committee and I'm also a board member, wh- when that was given to the budget committee. And they started going through all the different numbers and realizing what the increases are gonna look like. That's when the conversations got serious about how can we perhaps consolidate? Um, you know, for economies of scale with teachers FTEs. And so Chris and um, Cory, sorry, sorry Cory. Chris and Cory um, had conversations with a couple of the budget committee members because we had broken up into different groups and then come back together uh at the end of the the different individual conversations that were had. And so they were looking at some of their numbers um and thinking that, and I'm not an educator, I'm just a finance person. But thinking that educationally, it would make more sense to try to consolidate all of the kids, at least by grade level, so that they were all learning from the same content at the same times. Um, and so, but that's where it really started to gain momentum, if you will, and came to fruition. Um, and and, you know, the plan was put in motion once the, once we knew what the budget was gonna look like after it passed. So and I, and I do think those were taped, but I I'm not positive. Some of it, some of it was, I mean.
No, no, no.
No, that you're you're paraphrasing what I just said. Okay, so what I said was that the conversation started because the budget committee was looking at it, a budget committee that was overwhelmingly voted into office by all of the folks of our district, okay? And so their job is to look at different things. Enrollment sizes, class sizes, costs, projections of tax rates, okay, that's their job. And so during their job, they had further conversations with an administration that was already thinking about how can we get kids together by class and grade sizes, right? By grade levels, so that they get a better product, right? They get a better educational product. And I think you listened to Chris say that, right? It wasn't just lip service, he really means it, you know? So it's a combination of both of those things. Um, but it was not just purely financially driven. You said, how did it start and where did it come from? I think the impetus was probably from some of those meetings. So it's both.
We actually held um a number of, the the discussion, this discussion took place at many um, many of the school board meetings um last year um about with with the uh with both of the principals presenting to the board um their process of what it was that they were looking at in terms of of making the restructure. And they worked, they they did a lot of work um in terms of what the impact was going to be on the students. Um, and and how they could best use, use the resources that they had to be able to give the students the best product, the best education that they could. And and we had we, it was discussed at 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 least three or four um school district meetings and also at the budget meetings. And and the the discussion at the school board meetings was not, this is gonna save us money. The discussion at the school board meetings was, this is gonna be better for the education of our students. And we hired Dr. Spence as our new superintendent with the concept of increasing, increasing the uh the quality of the education that our students are getting. And one of the things that Dr. Spence has talked about a lot when we were, I was on the hiring committee, and one of the things that that impressed us a lot for, with him was the concept of creating a full community of, of not that there is Charlestown's school district and Walpole's school district and the Alstead attendance area school district, but that we're one school district and that as those students are coming to the high school, how can we work together to to create a a a um, students who are coming with similar um, with similar experiences as they come into that high school, so that then we produce from the high school really quality um, quality education, um, quality educated, quality educated students um to go out into the world and become taxpayers themselves. And so um to to be able to do that, having a a consistency of what students are are receiving. That was the, that was the focus of all of those discussions last year, was how do we do that within Charlestown? And Charlestown really was the first, was the first um attendance area to really attack it and really look closely at it. And that is now, that, the work that these guys did here is now spreading out into the, into the other two attendance areas, and you're hearing a lot of discussion there about. Um, you know, we have, we have small schools, we have different, you know, we have all these different places. What do we do to be able to to make sure that 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 our quality of our education is consistent across all of those areas? And so was there some discussion around budget? Certainly, because there's always going to be. But the the discussion was there, and there were a lot of, there was a lot of public at those, at those meetings. I'm not sure if you didn't. Okay, and so, so you know that we discussed it, and we discussed, and and that was discussed, and it was discussed consistently. Um, and so, um, and I I think you had some public meetings too, didn't you? Yeah, around the restructuring. And so, um, so that discussion was certainly had. Um, and then we didn't have a specific warrant article that said we're going to restructure the schools, but to be able to do that restructuring, we had, we had, it had to fit within, within the budget. And if we did the budget this way, that was based on the restructuring. And so that was, that was where that came from. So it wasn't like we were, you know, pulling a sly one and just putting it in the budget. We discussed it a lot.
And so if I can add some context here. So first, I want to give credit to the community for undergoing the restructuring. I understand that that was a lot within a given timeframe. But the added benefit of having the students on one campus, it allows our administrators to provide substantive feedback to teachers. Monitor instruction more closely. The difficult part about having, building principles split between buildings is that at any given point, their time can be consumed with any emergency in any one building. Which means that they're not able to get out into the buildings to actively observe instruction, support teachers, and really get a strong pulse for the building. So one of the things that we've been focused on this year is gathering, gathering information, pardon me, my mouth is dry. Long day, but we're gathering information to develop our district priorities, to think about the ways in which we can better educate our students and provide our teachers with the resources to do so. So there is an added benefit for us having the students on one campus, because we can monitor instruction a lot more closely. We can build community and we can really move the system forward in ways that will be beneficial to students. So everything from this point will be focused with students at the center of our decision-making. If you watch the board meetings, the board has provided support um in the direction of the school system is going. We are evaluating the data. We're looking at what supports and strategies our teachers need to be successful, and we're going to continue to innovate the system. And this is just a part of that process, because it allows us to again, be consolidated in one building and to really, really provide teachers with support and help our building principals manage that. I think one um fact lost maybe in the public's imagination, even mine on at some point. It's just how difficult it can be to move around the district. Now, since I've been here, I've been out in these schools. And I'm telling you, it is, it is a chore getting from Walpole to go to North, the North and then going to the different attendance areas. So I can only imagine what it's like being split, split between two buildings. And if you have any one price disease, it can prevent you from getting out to the other areas to lend support. So there there is a benefit to it, and students are definitely at the center of this, and this is why we're here having this discussion to tease this out.
Yes, Shannon.
Shannon Wood in again. So on the financial note. I'm assuming that moving the kids out of that school so that it's no longer functioning as a school would significantly drop our tax burden for the school? Or is that an in after assumption? How, how they got to.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, either way, I mean, you know, one of us. I believe the number, Lori will correct us if we're wrong, because you're business and I'm sure you can. Um, the savings, if you will, if that's what we want to say, from the restructuring was actually the bulk of it, the difference, was included in this year's budget that we're in right now. Um, for next year, though, if the, in, in shuttering the building or or, you know, bringing it down to its lowest operational point of just keeping it safe. I mean, because if the article, because, yeah, because if the article is voted no, right? We're gonna maintain the building and keep it safe, we're gonna maintain its security, its heat, you know, all those things. Um, but by not having um staff and custodial operations having to be there every day and all those things. I think the, the difference, Lori, was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, so a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars by not having educational operations uh occurring on a daily basis in the, in the building.
So it sounds like whether the town votes it or not, the pre-k is still moving for the primary school.
I I believe that is the um administration's um ed- educational priority, yes.
So then I have one other question. Do, does the board or whoever makes these decisions have some sort of idea of what they're planning to do with that school down the road? Eventually, if it's like, are there plans to open it back up or some other resource? I live nearby and my kids use the playground. Like, I'm, I'm interested for.
Yeah.
You know, and.
Neighborhood purposes.
Yeah, and will, will we still be able to utilize, you know, my kids ride bikes in the parking lot when the school is not open?
I, I mean, I don't know that as one budget mem- uh, one board member, budget, I'm sitting on both sides. Um, which is fun in itself. Next year, I'm giving that out to somebody else. So I don't think that we as a board have had a a full conversation about that, because I think that the next conversation we have will probably so twofold, and and please, I'm not the chair, so please um take over if you want to. I would imagine after tonight, at our next board meeting, we'll probably have more conversation about the warrant articles. Um, and I don't know that, I think there have been some ideas discussed, but I don't know that we've had conversations with the trustees, and and it might be a a situation where it's the chicken and the egg, right? So that before we can have those conversations, or or maybe not, with the trustees, we kind of need to know how the public feels about it. Um, the problem, I think, it's not really a problem, maybe it's more of an issue. The issue, I think, is that our whole district is shrinking, right? All of our towns are shrinking in population for students. Um, and I think that holds true this year. So all of the five towns, well, probably not Accra and Langdon, because you can't get much smaller. But Walpole and Alsted, you know, have multiple buildings as well, so that any of the shared operations um that might have like twelve or fourteen years ago when we were, phew, you know, um, that might have looked for space to move to. I know that when we, when we, as an administration, when we moved from the, I don't know what that old school was that we were in SAU here in Charlestown, when we moved from there out to Langdon, what's that?
The Holden, Holden School, it might have been, yeah.
And so, you know, we had no space to go anywhere at that point, right? Um, so I would think, you know, we have our new administration relatively at the SAU level. Uh, I would think that Dr. Spence and and our business administrator will probably have some conversations about, you know, is it prudent? Should we continue to rent from the town of Langdon for SAU and sped space? I don't know, but you know what? Those are some of the other conversations that may be coming down the road. that may be coming down the road, because we have other, you know, we have three towns that have space capacity right now. Um, you know, and so with the Alsted part, I can see you're not going to be the only ones having this conversation. I can see the conversation now moving to Walpole, because North Walpole School is just about empty and it's huge. Um, you know, it's two classes in it, right? Uh, two grade levels, yeah, yeah. So, you know, and yeah, and Alsted Primary is, is very small in their class sizes. So I, I think it's a, it's an issue that is district wide for all of the different towns. So those conversations will probably come, but I think that we need to get a pulse on how everybody feels. And then from that pulse, we need to then carry on the conversations. In this particular case, would be with the trustees, because we don't own that building.
So our voters would have potential ideas, maybe not something that's narrowed down and very specific before we vote? Or no?
I, I don't know that that, I, I don't know, maybe that's a legal question.
Voting to close it and to know what they want to use it for.
Yeah. Well, if, if we vote to close it, we can't, we won't be using it for anything.
If you permanently close it, then it'll be a conversation with trustees about turning the building back over to them.
And what they want.
If it's um, if it's, if that article's defeated, it's going to be a conversation of how is it going to be used? And did they ra- raise the clause in the D B D about whether it's still being used for educational purposes? We have to have that conversation, but I would imagine if we are, if it's not permanently closed, and we're going to be moving over to the primary school on a trial basis, that trustees probably would be patient while we went through the process of seeing how it works. I, I don't know that. I would have to have that conversation. But again, it's an unknown without talking about. But as long as it's being used as an, for educational purposes um, at some level, then it doesn't matter.
It is my sense that the, should the town of Charlestown decide that they don't want to fund this school and it does revert back to the trustees, that it would become some sort of um educational facility, some sort of uh community building space. So I wouldn't want to think that it's going to be sold off as condos condos uh or some sort of commercial space or anything of the sort. So.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we all chuckled, but I can't possibly fathom that that school, whether it be the trustees or the town, um, more so the trustees. I don't think they've entrusted that school to Fall Mountain for many, many years, but at the same time, there is constantly upkeep that they do around the school. So they're, I mean, they're still very much involved. Um, I think this is a new conversation for them, so I also think we need to give them a bit of time to kind of wrap their heads around some of the possibilities out there if Charlestown was to do this. Um, if they, if they were mindful enough to give it to the Fall Mountain School District as long as they have. I trust in my heart they're mindful enough to make sure that it stays within the community that it's always been part of, and that it stays part of that. I, I don't see it as anything other than the Farwell School and and maybe a little bit bigger orchard down the road. Once again, a couple more trees here and there. Or maybe the soccer field becomes a little bit bigger and, and things like that. It can.
Remind me, Kevin, I remind me if I'm wrong, but the, the, the trust currently owns a soccer field, correct?
Correct.
So they, the, the, their soccer field's not part of the district, it's part of the trust. So that's all attached. If that is your mind, well.
Good question. Um, it was mentioned earlier that they may not, or they don't have to take it back and then it does go to the town?
If they waive the, if they waive the term of the deed, which I I highly doubt.
It's a large expense for a small group to.
Yeah, I mean, there's an expense associated with upkeep. I, I don't know if there is asbestos in the building or other considerations.
It's the drug in the north section, but the far wall section.
I think we have baited a lot of that.
You may have baited it all. I'm sure there's a lot, there's a long conversation there about. But if they were to somehow waive um, um, the clause in the deed, then by statute, if it were permanently closed, it would go to the town.
And there are conversations happening um to facilitate things that could go and be rent rental property um to raise some income in that building for the Farwell trustees. So the school district would absolutely help facilitate some of those conversations as well in the event that the town votes to close.
To, I guess I've been wondering, does the town get to know this before we go to vote? Because how are we going to know if the school board is going to be? I mean, if they vote no, we're not going to have it. So then it would go back to the trustees and if they say no, it goes to the town. So how do we know what we're voting on? Yeah, that's my concern. I want to know, like, I'm no thanks to the town, but I'm a whole lot more comfortable with the trustees owning it. If it goes back to the town, my vote definitely going to be no, without knowing exactly what they want to use it for.
I would have, I would.
If they're going to keep it, then I don't want.
I think it's fairly safe that the trustees will take it back. I would find it very unusual that they would, would not take it back, given their attachments to this law treaty and the fact that they own the abutting property. If there were a, a defunct organization, um, I think the likelihood that they might waive it would be much greater. But in my experience, these kind of things. Um.
In my experience, we can't trust anyone here. So I would really like to know how we vote on that. That's a huge concern to me.
Well, I, I can't force the trustees to make a decision.
Right. So I guess we just have to be humble.
And I haven't even engaged them in a conversation. So I'd be glad to on behalf of the board.
I agree.
But once again, they have to, they have to take the time to see how, I mean, they may even want to wait to see what the, the vote is and how the vote is and what the public wants and they may want input before they make the decision. I don't know.
Thank you, Sam, dear. Um, if the town votes no, it stays with the school, do they have any idea what they're going to be able to use it for? Other than just the, we were told they're still using it at other offices and other things.
There are certainly opportunities to use it. We, um, things on the table are bringing the S A U there, even though it is on the outskirts of the district. There are um other departments that need space in this district. There is a state law currently that if you have unused or underused space, that you have to offer it to charter schools. So the opportunities are really wide open. There's also other opportunities for creating um standalone schools that have uh special ed, um, that meet special ed needs that could be taking kids in from other districts to meet some needs that they might have as well. There are um opportunities to open daycare facilities. I mean, it's, there are a lot of opportunities for this building that could serve these communities. And so.
With the school board or?
Well, it really does depend on.
Either way, it's going to be Charlestown taxes, but it sounds.
Which is why it went on the warrant last year for only the Charlestown voters to have the opportunity to say yes or no to that, because it is your tax dollars. And so uh the opportunity you have right now is if you say no, you want to leave the school as is, then um we are intending to move the preschool on a trial basis and see how it works better in that building, which means the school gets essentially minimized. And it will be safe and no pipes are going to burst and whatnot for the winter, and then we will reassess that over the next year. And so if you vote yes, that you would like the school to be closed, then it uh is in the hands of the Farwell trustees. They get to make a choice about whether they want to accept it or not. And based on what they do, then we move on to the next step, which would be to the town of Charlestown. Um, either one of those opportunities, uh, excuse me, either the trustees or the town of Charlestown has the opportunity to turn this into any one of that list of things that was just presented. So there really is a lot of discussion happening and there really is a lot of opportunity here. Um, so I hope that you will take all of this information. Feel free to ask more questions. Are there any others?
I have one more. Sorry.
No need to apologize.
I just want to go back to this primary school thing. First of all, um, I've had a lot of conversations with Chris and I can appreciate the restructure. Um, my kid is part of the restructure. We went to North and it is working really well and I do like that.
I'm really glad to hear that.
Um, my only concern is who else can see this vision? I mean, how long are we going to have Chris down here?
Not long enough, don't just say that.
Who is going to stand behind this? When we, I mean.
I, I think it's, it's you guys, it's the community, honestly. Uh, and I see a superintendent, who, board, myself, I'm not going anywhere right now. But there is, my goal was to plan out so that we weren't in a situation that we are five years down the road saying we do not have more space. I don't want, I don't want that to ever happen. Um, I think the model that we have now has some flexibility and it meets the needs of the students in a way that we weren't able to provide, having multiple schools in different locations. Um, if you remember, we had, well, your, your son was in a uh, a class of seven?
Six to eight, and then.
Okay. And at the, at the primary school, we had seventeen and seventeen. Like, there's always been a um difference between Charlestown Primary School, it has a number of different opportunities that North doesn't. North had a lot of opportunities that CPS didn't. My goal is to try to blend those together so that everybody's needs and that and some of the traditions that, that were up at North, continue down at Charlestown Primary and vice versa. So I hope I'm doing that this year and um that the students are being met. They, we're met, open arms coming back. They love seeing their friends that they kind of left in kindergarten back in um, back in, as their friend circle. So there's, there's been a lot of positives with this, this restructure. And it will take us into the future, in my opinion, a, a, a number of years. I think that you also have a much, you, you have a very, you have a very strong superintendent now, who is, who is focused on this, on this kind of vision. And so that is what, that and our, and our um, our administrators are, are gelled and working together as a group, which is really, really beneficial for all of you um, and for all of the students. And so, and that, that, keeping that is what we want to keep going forward, is consistency in our, in leadership.
And to just, to add to that, one of the things that we're focusing on operationally is moving from any person dependent structures. So we have to build systems that run autonomously, like the Ford plant. Regardless of who's pushing that button, that car is still coming through there and it's going to have the same output. So as we're building the system, we're trying to think about sustainability and in what ways can we service Kage from a systemic point of view? So it doesn't matter where they are, they will receive the same services and the same quality of education.
I, I don't, we don't have a educational problem with this. It's definitely worked out for us, it's the better. The problem we have as parents is our first is in second grade, three years in, and we have moved schools two times, three times. Are we going to have to move again? Is there anything else in the future that's going to continue to make this harder to parent?
That's legitimate. I can appreciate that on it.
And that's, we're working towards not, not having that, towards having there be consistency for your student.
I think we're just looking for reassurance that this is what we're going to work on. And like, I think Jen had made a point about middle school maybe not being fully ready this year. Um, the primary school, I know they worked hard, so I can only speak to that. Um, and it was, well, I just hope that going forward, what we're hoping to do and what we do are the same thing, because I feel like that hasn't been the case always.
Right. And that's, that's, and we recognize, I'm sorry.
Continue.
Okay. We, I, I tend to just to start talking. She has to kick me. But um, that, that's what we really want to address. It, it, we've, we as a board feel the same way and we want to have there be consistency and we want there to be um, be a solid education for, for the students.
And hopefully not needing to add on, like, where he has seen open space, we'll all see the same open space regardless.
That was certainly in uh part of our plan, which is why we did the site visit. It's why uh we brought that back to the board to have that conversation of, is there capacity here? We know, um, I also sit on the planning board here in town. We just approved a twenty lot subdivision. We know there's more families coming in. We want young families coming in. They add to the community. They uh create life here. And we wanted to be able to ensure that the plan we're making here can absorb all of that. And it was a very intentional plan. All of those questions have been asked. We have taken them into account before even beginning to say, yeah, we really wholeheartedly support this. Um, I will say I wholeheartedly supported it from the very beginning um, because I recognized that there was disparity in between what was going on in North Charlestown and what was going on in the primary school. And then what was going on in Charlestown versus what was going on in Walpole and Alsted. What this has done has allowed us to be more consistent, to give everybody the same opportunities to um really bring up the level of education we're providing here. It makes our administration's job so much easier to put a curriculum in place that everybody understands and has, because now they're all in one place. All of the teachers can collaborate with each other. If you have a student who doesn't get along so well with this style in this room, they have options. When we were, had separate one through five in North Charlestown, we didn't have that option. They were where they were. And it could have just been a really difficult year. We've taken all of those comments and questions and internalized them and brought out these plans for the education of the kids here in Charlestown. And so um, I hope you all see that. It comes right down to it.
I think also the vision will be a lot more crystal. We're working on a strategic plan for our district that's going to really guide our thinking, where we're going and what we envision. And so that document will allow us to, it'll, it'll illustrate our thinking more clearly.
I'm listening here.
Emily, thank you. Uh, and circle back on my question earlier about the potential tax break. If this was to pass, if we were to close the school, if it comes back to the trustees, or if it comes back to the town, would Charlestown still be responsible for a portion of those taxes? Or would it be a different, different kind of structure?
Hi, Emma. Um, I think, and the young lady here had the same question, um, one of them. I think it would absolutely depend on what the use of the building is, right? Um, because if the use of the building, you know, the trustees, I believe, have the opportunity to allow the use of the building to be whatever they deem appropriate, correct? So um, depending on what that usage is, or the town, if it reverted back to the town, they would have the same um opportunity to determine what the use of the building would be. If the building were, were to be used by um a nonprofit, then certain taxes don't apply to nonprofit institutions, right? Yeah, maybe you should answer that, because that's your.
So it really would depend on what the use of the building is.
Correct.
If the town, if it ended up in the town's scheme, when the town owns the property, it's tax exempt, maybe myself. It would be tax exempt. But if it were to go back to the trust, it would depend on what the use is and whether the use qualifies for a tax exemption or whether real estate taxes would apply to the building. And there's a whole bunch of exceptions. Um, but in, I think we're getting the cart way in front of the horse right now, because we don't know what's going to happen at this vote. We don't know whether the trustees are going to take it back. We don't know what the potential uses are for it. And that's all would determine taxability.
Plus the dollar amount, right? The dollar amount would absolutely depend on what the use is.
Well, the town, the town of Charlestown is already determined and they keep on their tax records, value of the building. Even though it's not at this point taxable. But if it were to revert to some private use that's a taxable use, then the town could potentially levy taxes as long as the trust owns it.
Can I just follow up on that real quick? Because I understand what you're saying. It depends on what's, what's going to happen. But it seems like some of the discussion here that's really up in the air. So, so if this passes in March and we move forward with this for the next, this. So, so if this passes in March and we move forward with this for the next fiscal year for the school. And the next fiscal year for the town, what would that next year look like? It seems like everything is moving quite quickly. I mean, I said we're trying to put a cart before the horse. So, is there a plan in place just for the next year and interim if, if we do move forward with this?
Again, we would have to speak with the trustees about their intentions. If their intentions are to, in fact, to, you know, invoke that provision of the deed. Then they probably would revert back to the trustees and at that point they would decide what they're gonna do with it. That would drive what the town does as far as taxability of the property or not. There would be a very large conversation, I think, um, that would happen between the trustees and the town regarding the. The use as it transitions into whatever its new life would be.
So, our, our, I'm sorry, non-essence. Our responsibility, if the, if the article, if it's a yes vote on the article and it's a yes to close, right? Then our responsibility for, uh, maintenance of the building would end June thirty next year. And then going forward then into the next year's budget, that relieves the budget of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of operation.
No, 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 that is already.
Yeah, it's already removed. We've removed that from the next budget.
So, there would be.
Because operationally, that's why I said depends on what we're using it for. Operationally, that money's come out. If this, if this, if this is a no vote and we continue to be in possession of the building. Then the school board will work with the administration to move enough funds over. To make, maintain the building's safety, right? The safety of the building, the integrity of the building. But it wouldn't be funded for operational purposes. So, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't, and it won't raise taxes. We're gonna redirect funds from another location. Okay, for the next year out.
I was just wondering if you had a breakdown of the number a hundred and eighty-nine thousand without staff or, uh, maintenance.
I don't know. That's a big question. Yeah. Do you wanna get back to it?
I would have.
Okay, yeah.
Well, I can take a stab at it. So, the one eighty-nine is, um, um. It includes the full-time secretary that's there. It includes the custodial staff. It includes. It includes the utilities that aren't absolutely essential, things like snow plowing. We don't really need to plow. Any number of other things. So, those are the things that make that up. Uh, the teacher position that was, has been moved to. We still have a teacher, so it's just moved in between building budgets.
Right. It reallocated to yours, yeah.
How much does it cost just to keep that place heated and no damage?
I don't know that off the top of our head, but we can get that. We'll get that number.
That's gonna be a.
It's already in the budget. We're not going to. Oh, I see what you're saying. What we, what we run. Okay, what we run, yeah.
Is this? Do we have to do this this year? Can we have the building but still move pre-K to the primary school? Do we have to vote on this now? Um, it sounds like, well, some of the trustees are pretty easy to deal with. Maybe we can hear from them. What their thoughts on that are. If that's going to go back to the town, then not.
That really is in the hands of the voters. So, if you vote yes to close.
But how can we vote if we don't know if that's going to the town or not?
You still may not know. I mean, so, so I guess we could try to reach out to them. And before, before the deliberative session, so that we could bring more information to you at deliberative. We could do that.
I don't even know that they'd had an opportunity to meet and discuss what they would do with it if this article passed.
Mr. Streeter.
Uh, Dave Streeter, I'm one of the trustees. I was just started as a trustee about fifteen years prior to it being given to the district in ninety-six. There are possibilities of us losing that completely. Because if the trustees were to take it over and we can't get nonprofit status. It would be pretty close to impossible to figure out how to finance it all. It is my, this is my opinion now, okay? Past history of the town has not helped us at all to speak of. There's been a need for this school for more than two hundred years. Jesse Farwell originally built the building and donated it to the inhabitants of North Charlestown. It replaced four one-room schoolhouses. From then on, there was, I think, um, K through eight all the way through till nineteen forty-seven, forty-five, forty-seven. And, um, from that point on, um. It, there's been times where it's been tried, people have tried to close it. Fortunately, every time there's a shortage someplace in the district. We're the ones that they pick on. It just, it's a fact of life. We've had to do it on our own. Um, we thought in ninety-six, we had finally found a way to solve it with a very generous gift of four hundred thousand. When Harvey and Christine Hill. Um, then the trustees agreed to, uh, give it to the district. And with the understanding they would keep the school there. Well, we were pretty sure that we better have a good thing in the deed saying we got it back. Because it was a pretty good chance, we all knew it then, that the district would remain on the deal and that's what's happening now. Anyway, uh, one of the questions I have was, um, did, did the board have a meeting with the parents in North Charlestown? Heard all kinds of information, like we always do, about the economics of things and the administration of things. But what about the people, parents? My two kids in the eighties were trucking the North Walpole for fourth and fifth grades, three years. We trucked back and forth for shows, sports, all kinds of things. Um, it's, it's a long way. The town is long and skinny. And it hasn't changed a day over the years. It was actually divided in half, uh, somewhere around eighteen hundred. And, uh, in those days, you paid taxes to a church and the people didn't want to travel. So, we ended up with a north parish and a south parish and you paid your taxes to the church you attended. Uh, same thing today. Um, unfortunately, uh, we're a lot smaller than downtown, so we don't have the voting power. But I think a lot of times I've seen they do not, that there's not enough, uh, consideration given to the parents. And the added costs and the hours, uh. My kid spent, you know, a half hour each way to North Walpole for, for three years. And that was not good. So, anyway, um, I've said my piece. Trustee's purpose is to keep a school there, open. Um, I don't think any of us ever got on the board to be a trustee without any, you know, any, anything else in mind than that. And I think we will do whatever we possibly can, um, to, to keep the school.
Well, I'm really glad you came tonight to give us that history. I was hoping you'd be here.
How many trustees are there? Five? Are there five, five trustees?
Uh, there, there are only four living.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there are five that signed this agreement and four of the five.
Gotcha. Yeah, I had some questions, but they're for the board.
Are there any other questions or comments from the public here?
Ever meeting with the people in North Charlestown?
Sorry, um, so, there was no meeting set up in, formally in the North Charlestown school for these discussions?
Last year, just done as a restructuring thing and nobody really.
You did hear how the whole process worked out. We've discussed it, uh, this evening in addition. You know, to the numerous times that we've discussed it over the last year. And it is something that's been discussed for at least a decade, so.
You went up to North Charlestown and talked with, with folks, didn't you, last year?
I wasn't the school principal at the time, but we did have our discussion, sorry, uh, with North Charlestown. I, I was primarily focused on the primary school, so I, there, I think we did it in different ways. Uh, and took different approaches, but yes, they, there was discussion happening at North Charlestown schools.
I would be willing to beg you that most of the people up there did not understand that restructuring meant closing their school. It's just my feeling.
Oh, now you just. You're absolutely correct. Of all the moms and parents I've talked to in North Charlestown, there was no invitation for just us parents that, that kids in North Charlestown. That did not happen at all. So, no.
My main purpose for coming tonight is to try to get a feel for what people want in North Charlestown. Because if there, if there's no one for it to keep the school there, then there won't be one. It speaks to people to do that.
It does.
But I wanted to, I wanted to find out if they've been given a fair shake, and there's so many times in the past we haven't, we've been given a fair shake.
Jamie?
I'm gonna speak personally now, okay? I live in North Walpole. So, I totally understand what you're saying about how the town proper doesn't think about you. Okay? Because the town of Walpole proper surely doesn't think about North Walpole very often. Okay? And I've lived that for twenty-four years. So, and I went to meetings, um, for the North Walpole School. Because, you know, we were in some of the same situations and that was fifteen years ago. You know, the district owns that school, so we wouldn't be having this discussion with an outside source or trustee. Because I see that coming within the next year or two that they will shut down North Walpole School. It's, and, and it's difficult. It's difficult when you lose a resource like that, that's so close to your home. And residents' homes. And I, I totally can appreciate, I can totally appreciate that. Because I can see the North Walpole School from my house. You know, it's right there, right on the hill. I live right on the main drag on the fence. Um, you know, and, and I can totally appreciate that. Um, part of, and not the, not the discussion for Charlestown, and again, I'm speaking personally. Part of the discussion I know that used to happen was that, while your precinct doesn't pay for that school, we all do. Right? And so, you're right. It often comes down to what your tax bill looks like. And how the village only has six hundred people, but the town has three thousand. Um, you know, because the schools that you keep open that are only your kids from K to eight. As it was, or first to eight in North Walpole, when it got consolidated and the kids got bussed across the railroad tracks. Was the comment that was made, some of the people in Walpole. We don't want our kids bussed over the railroad tracks to the other side. That hurt just a little. Um, so I get it. I totally get it. I've lived there. I don't have kids in the district, but I'm a proud North Walpole person. And we have a nice village. And so, it's hard. It is hard and change is hard. Um, but it's a matter of sustainability. And I know in our hearts as school board members, that you vote to put us here. That our first concern, hopefully, is for the children, okay? And then our second concern has to be about sustainability for the district as a whole. And unfortunately, the folks who pay for the districts to operate. Um, so it's a balancing act. Um, I think that if the warrant stays on, and I think the school board has a lot of discussion to have at the next meeting. If the warrant stays on, that the people need to, in their hearts, figure out, do we want this building to remain with us or not? And if the vote is that we want the building to remain with us, that I'm sure the school board as a whole will figure out what that looks like. Um, but again, I think you're all one Charlestown, like it or not, right? Like, we're all one Walpole, like it or not. There's a north and there's a south. And we all pay one set of taxes to one town. And often, it can be difficult conversations. Um, and so, I guess that's all. I, I, I can sympathize and I understand. I understand the feelings that you have. Um, and I just hope that we can do the best we, that we can when we make our decisions and that they're in, they're honestly in the interest of the children. So, thank, thank you. Thank you all for being here, because it's important. It's important for us to hear from you. Um, whether you think we're listening or not, it's important.
All right, seem no other questions and concerns?
I could ask one, I think, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Per student, how does, how does that work out if you compare? What was the first step? If you divided the number of students in North Charlestown into that number. Would you come up with a number that's higher than if you divided the number of kids in the primary school into whatever it costs there?
It would be, well, so it's gonna be difficult because of the consolidation of students into the classes. You probably gained some economies in how many teaching positions you had to hire. So, like, if you split them out again, you would have to, if, and say you did, I don't know, one through four. Say you did one through four, because you don't have five anymore, right? So, say you did one through four at North Charlestown, that you're talking, you have to have four teachers. Or you have to teach a one, two, three, four, like, out, like, um, Sarah Porter does, right, and Atworth. Um, so, so to answer that question, honestly, I think you would have to look at what the thought was behind it. Was it to send four more, for the four classes back there and then look at what that amount of children is? Into that figure, because that figure would then change. It would go up, right? Instead of being a hundred and eighty-nine, it would go up because you'd be putting four teachers, a secretary, your custodian back. You know?
How can you say, you're gonna save a hundred and eighty-nine thousand if you don't compare it to the Charlestown school? I don't, I'm not following why you can't do that.
So, those are the expenses that they don't have to pay. They don't have to pay a janitor.
Those are the expenses. That's for this fiscal year.
You see, you didn't say that, right?
Right, and there's how many students up there? How many kids this year?
Currently, there's twenty weeks, uh, twenty-seven students, pre-K, half-day.
Half-day.
That's for the pre-K.
Well, but that's the dollar amount that equates to keeping the school open for that amount of students. If you put more, my point. Okay, I'm sorry.
I was asking if the school was operational like it was a year ago with all the grades in there. Compared to, to what it was cost for people at, at the primary.
Okay, so before the consolidation was done?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have those off the top of my.
I, I don't have those off the top of my head either. What I can say is the class sizes were smaller at North. Your cost per pupil would be higher. Um, that's all I can say, not knowing all the numbers. Typically, the class size at Charlestown Primary is a little bit larger than, than, if not a lot. Depending on the, the number of students. There was always an imaginary line, and I've dealt with this for years. Uh, okay, where, we always tried to put one-third of our students up in North Charlestown, two-thirds at CPS. It never panned out like that for the eleven years that I was here. Sometimes CPS was much larger. There was one year that North had a larger class. But, um, the prior, throughout history of, of my ten years, there's. The majority of the classes up at North Charlestown were small, so it'd be higher cost per people.
Did you ever take, I mean, was that you bring your parents?
I tried.
I, and I lived, I lived in town and in fourth grade, I went to North Charlestown. In fifth grade, I did something. I mean, it was.
And, and I, I've sent letters out before and, and low years saying, you have some flexibility. Would you like to go to North? And there weren't any that, um. There was maybe one or two that took that, that option, but, um, the majority declined. But, um, the majority declined. So.
Nancy Houghton.
I have two great children that went to North Charlestown. They enjoy the use at North Charlestown more than they have any other school. Are you having trouble hearing me? Reason that I spoke like that, because I can't hear the people in the front row here. And I asked at your last meeting, please use a microphone so we can all hear. Thank you. Anyway, they enjoy North Charlestown more than they have any other school in the district, but they're, they still are doing fine.
I heard you Nancy. Thanks. Thank you for repeating that.
Thanks. Jen, I just have one thing to add to, to Mr. Young's comment. Um, all three of my kids. Started at the primary school and had wonderful experiences there. And we live in North Charlestown. So when it came time for them to leave pre-K kindergarten, they had to leave all their friends to go to North. And that was a really difficult time for them. Um, so I get why you have people that don't want to leave when their kids have made the first friends of their lives. Um, I'm saying we did that and, and it worked. We made it work. It was one of those things that wasn't great, but it worked. So maybe that's the biggest reason you have people who don't want to switch schools, because they don't want to leave what's comfortable and what they know.
And I agree with your statement. I just, that's personal and it, it's family, it's a family choice when it comes to that. Um, and, and there are pros and cons to. When it was, um, before the restructuring, there's always pros and cons to small schools and larger schools. And depending on your student, um, it can benefit them in, in different ways. So.
Would anybody else like to add anything to this hearing?
Any other motion or? Want to make a motion and that we close the hearing?
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you all very much for your input.